Communities and essential to that is a vibrant local business community. So that is one of my top priorities is economic vitality. As all of you know, the impacts of COVID have been devastating. I did have a chance to look through the Santa Cruz Chamber newsletters and just a couple of data points that really stood out to me is that 4,000 individuals representing 25% of the hospitality workforce are unemployed. And since March, 60% of California restaurant workers have been laid off or furloughed. And 60% of California restaurants are owned by people of color and 50% are either owned or partially owned by women. So these are real numbers and these are dire numbers and they're impacting everyday people. They're impacting people like you and I. And it will take creative thinking and persistence and partnership and securing outside sources to address these devastating impacts from the recent disasters. I have done this, I've brought in $30 million, over $30 million at brands. I've co-founded a social enterprise business. I have worked across the county, across jurisdictions, and I'm hoping to work with you to rebuild our community. Thank you.
Maria Cadenas.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us today. My name is Maria Cadenas. I am the Executive Director of Santa Cruz Community Ventures, where we focus in addressing building our local economy so that it contributes to our well-being. Within Santa Cruz Ventures, I've been working around central coast issues around local capital and supporting the succession of small business owners so that their employees can be able to continue the legacies that have been built over time. This was prior to the pandemic and I look forward to figure out how we can look at the economic recovery in a way that it is just and focused on those most impacted, including our business owners and businesses owned by women and people of color. Prior to Community Ventures, I worked to develop global strategies around community involvement and economic development in rural communities, as well as working across the US, Mexico, and Chile and implementation of those issues. I worked for the ACLU as their Associate Director in Wisconsin. I worked in tech and all of that experience really is about 20 years of working in communities to work collaboratively to solve problems that may seem unsolvable and to focus on how we can move forward. I want to be able to offer that expertise in this specific time in Santa Cruz, where we're facing tremendous crises, not only housing and the pandemic, but it's on top of already a failing economy that was leaving behind our retail businesses, that was putting a lot of pressure on our workers who could no longer afford to live here and really changing who we are as a community. My goal to run is really to bring equity at the center, make sure that we address our local economies in ways that make sense and strengthen our communities, make downtown a thriving commercial and cultural center of who we are. And then quite frankly, we just got to look at housing. We have to look at housing as a connector of all those issues on how we move forward. So again, Maria Cadenas, you can learn more at votemaria2020.org and I'm honored to be here tonight. Thank you.
Did Alicia join us? I don't see her. Sandy Brown.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. I am Sandy Brown. I am a member of the City Council. I am a university instructor. I teach at San Jose State in American Studies and Environmental Studies. I have worked locally in the nonprofit sector, doing labor community organizing, and also very involved in organic agriculture. I spent many years working on the North Coast at Swanberry Farm while I was in grad school and I kept my feet on the ground locally during that process. And I'm really pleased to be back in working in local government or on local policy issues. So my approach to public service is motivated by my lifelong commitments to advancing the goals of economic democracy, sustainability, and social justice. And it's also informed by principles of good governance. I really believe that local government should reflect our community's values and that people should have a voice in deciding how our city functions, how our city runs. And talking with people across the town, I have learned that many don't feel like their voices are being heard and I want to be part of changing that. And so for me, that means prioritizing policies and programs aimed at supporting affordable housing and accountable development, environmental justice, protection and neighborhood quality of life, rethinking community safety. And right now, the biggest priority is clearly making our way through for a just COVID recovery. I can see here, Robert. So you know, I think that we really need to be focused on finding ways to support our community and using the resources we have available, the expertise, the funding, and you know, all of our tools to ensure that we stabilize our community with the work that we do. I'll leave it there for now. Thanks.
Martine Watkins. Great, thank you. So my name is Martine, as you said, and I am a current City Council member. I'm also the former mayor for the City of Santa Cruz. I work in education at the County Office of Education, working on programs from cradle to career. I also received my master's degree in public policy from the Leon and Sylvia Institute of Public Policy. And for this group, this last year, I was really honored and humbled to have been named the Santa Cruz County Chamber Woman of the Year. And I grew up in Santa Cruz County and my husband and I are really fortunate to be raising our two daughters here in Midtown. And I'm committed to this community and I'm invested in our future. And I've worked on complex solutions to issues for a really long time. So I'm not only committed to these causes, I actually feel I have a track record to translate them into policy and produce results. And that can be evidenced by the dedicated children's fund that the city has. And those dollars right now are supporting our essential workers. Looking at community-informed housing solutions with the Housing Blueprint Subcommittee, Climate Justice for Santa Cruz Taxpayers, and the Most Timely Health and All Policies Initiative. And I really truly just want to build on these successes and believe we can use really this pivotal moment in our time to transform our systems, to strengthen our community, to incentivize economic growth and to preserve our environment. And as we do, my vision is really similar to a lot of other climate mayors and council members and electives throughout our nation, and that's that we apply a climate lens to recovery. We build back better, we lead with equity, and we prioritize multiple benefits that yield, multiple policies that yield multiple benefits. Santa Cruz is an incredible city and when we know how to come together, we've seen that recently. And we all play a role in contributing to the well-being of our beloved cities. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Sonia Brunner.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sonia Brunner and I hope to share a little bit about myself. I grew up in Berkeley, California, and I moved to Santa Cruz in 1992. My son was born in 1995 and I was many years a single mom who worked, went to college, and through that grew very resilient and resourceful, which also led me to becoming a tenant in low-income public housing. I have served overall seven years on the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, supporting hundreds of other low-income residents with affordable housing units, programs, and funding. Two of those years being a tenant myself. And I've also worked the last 15 years with the Downtown Association of Santa Cruz, the last five years on staff with business support and managing programs, the Downtown ambassadors and the information kiosk. I currently live in the Seabright neighborhood. And some things I'm really committed to going forward definitely include economic development and sustainability, really supporting our local business economy, which I do every day in my job, and keeping things local and exploring more equitable policies, ensuring that our public spaces are safe and healthy places for everyone. And housing, more opportunities for affordable housing. You know, with the COVID-19 pandemic and the lightning fires, we are in economic crisis. And I would be honored to continue giving back and would be honored to have your vote. My name is Sonia Brunner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sonia. We're going to move on to the questions now. Once again, this is being recorded. All four sponsors here will have this available at our various outlets for you to see. We did have one candidate not get on the call. That's going to allow a little extra time, so we will be able to take a question or two at the end. If you have a question, please put it in the chat box and Robert will pick one. I know that was said before, but we've had other people come on. So the timer this time now for the questions is three minutes. And we did do a randomizer on these so that we are mixing up the order that we're calling on folks. So gosh, I hate to do this, you just finished speaking. Sonia, you will be first this time. And our first question tonight that the candidates have seen and are prepared for, once again, three minutes after I finish speaking. What is the most important or impactful policy, program, or funding source that the city can use to help our local business community? What do you identify as the major economic need in our city? And how will you, if elected, how will you address that? Sonia.
Thank you, Steve. Based on the last six months of COVID-19 impacts, I would say there's not just one important program or policy, but rather an important approach. And our city leadership has to be innovative, collaborative, and most of all, flexible. The work I do every day with our downtown businesses has shown me that each business has a unique set of challenges. And for some businesses, grants will help them get through difficult times ahead and others will need technical assistance. And there have been some great examples like the GetVirtual.org, which was a collaboration with local tech. Some businesses simply need customers and the city can support with marketing and community engagement, like the Downtown Shop Local Holiday Campaign and partnering with Visit Santa Cruz on some of those marketing efforts. All of the businesses need to be healthy and what the local business community needs is for the city to make a top-down commitment to prioritize the health of our local businesses. Additionally, it's going to be important that the city make decisions with the business community at the table and really working together as a partnership with all the business organizations. The Chamber, for example, that drives economy and advocates for state and federal levels of funding and working with the Small Business Development Center and Economic Development in the county and the city. So really having all those partnerships work together with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Let's move on now. Our second candidate will go to Martine Watkins. Martine.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, let me just start by saying thank you to the Chamber, the Business Council, Visit Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz Works, Community Foundation, the Seaside Company. I know we have a county economic recovery committee. Our city's Economic Development Department and so many more have been working really hard to collaborate. And your commitment to our vitality in our community during this challenging time has not gone unnoticed. I think what we have to remember is that we as cities cannot provide the magnitude of financial relief needed. So we need to follow best practices and take strategic actions to support our local businesses. And we have to work with them in every step of the way. And so first, we have to absolutely continue to be proactive about state and federal resources and being able to draw them down and use them to support our local businesses. We can continue to halt or defer financial burdens placed on small businesses. I mean, clearly with businesses struggling, the prospect of paying utilities and taxes and licensing fees, that also poses a significant threat to their ability to stay open. The City of Santa Cruz was able to respond right away by creating a local relief fund with a blend of financing options. And we worked with our local finance institutions and businesses to keep capital going for businesses right away. And that was through our microloan program. And this type of community collaboration was facilitated by our Economic Development Department. We were able to do so also by redeploying our CDBG funds, which we have to look at moving forward as well, as well as continuing a no-to-low-interest loan program, depending on how we are able to meet our business needs. We can provide enhanced support to businesses applying for SBA loans and supplement their efforts to provide technical assistance to them and specifically reaching out to those who may not have as many resources and need supports like other minority or women-owned businesses, Spanish-speaking businesses in our city. Support them with webinars and other types of tools to help them access services and the resource sharing, continuing to update our webpage regularly to follow and track everything, as I know many of your organizations do, so people are able to get connected to what's available in our community. And I think one of the things that we also need to do, which we're doing right now, is evaluating the impact of small business through surveys and just continue to hear the voices of our businesses so that we're able to know, did you have to lay off, folks? How are we being nimble and responsive immediately? And I think I'll end it with that because I know my time is up, but looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, Martine. We will move on now to Shebra. Shebra, your turn, please.
Great, thank you for the question. It will take partnership across sectors and across our jurisdictions and our county to get creative. And it will take outside resources. We won't be able to do this alone. We have to be very aggressive about federal and state funding. And this is something that I have proven to do over the last 20 years. I've brought in grant funds that have been very competitive. And in order for us to do that, we have to partner across jurisdictions. I know that recently our Economic Development Department went for an economic administrative, development administrative fund that could potentially bring $5 to $7 million. And they partnered across jurisdictions to bring this in. So it's that kind of creative thinking that we have to continue to pursue. I also know that our comprehensive economic development strategy was recently certified. That will open us up to more opportunities for grant funding. A lot of great programs have been mentioned already. The Grow Santa Cruz Loan Program that we have in place, continue to expand that program. Working with public health so that we can move to the next tier as soon as possible. Working with public health so we can pull back some of the restrictions in a way that's safe for the community, in a way that will allow tourists to come back and students to come back. And we also have an opportunity that's coming before us to work on our strategic plan. I think that we need to look at the nexus between climate change, climate action, and economic recovery and creating inclusive communities and make economic recovery as one of the priorities as we redo our strategic plan and identify specific ways that we can operationalize these areas that we care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Shebra. Well said. Kayla, you're up next.
Awesome, thank you. And first, I just, I want to apologize for my short intro. I think I took brief, very literal. I don't mean to shortchange everyone, but this feels actually more like me to just kind of jump into the issue. So again, I apologize for that. Yeah, I mean, local government is certainly not going to be enough to, I think, fully solve the challenges that I hear from small business owners here in the community. We all need to think bigger. We'll need to rethink what it means to collaborate, what it means to go deep in solving these problems. And I can't stress that enough. And you know, the lessons that I've learned so far from talking to small business owners, a few things come to mind here. The first that I hear a lot, that I actually don't, I don't hear a lot broadly, is how difficult it is to manage the uncertainty of being in business when you don't have the information from the health officer about what's going on, where we're at, what to expect. And I talked to so many people that are like, hey, I could probably manage this if I just knew. Like, just tell me what to plan for. And so, you know, I know that Dr. Newell is doing her absolute best and I commend her. And I know that Community Foundation has stepped in and created ways of developing information pathways that are trying to meet the needs of small business, but it's not enough. And I want to see if the city can kind of step in and, you know, throw our weight into the fray of trying to get this information to folks. So a little bit about me, I have a master's degree in economics and I studied capital flows from governmental bodies to small businesses, particularly those of color. So I'm excited to nerd out a little bit about the capital flows and what's going on locally. Of course, the microloan program I thought was really promising. It was small. I've heard from folks, it just wasn't enough and it's never enough. But I liked the approach. It was nimble. It was meant as a stopgap until the SBA loans came through. I thought it was a good move. I commend Bonnie. I think she's brilliant, quite frankly. And then the PPP loan and other loans from the SBA came through. And what we saw was there's still this kind of first come, first serve approach. And I swear that the local institutions, they were so responsive, they were so dedicated, working nonstop. Only 30 seconds, okay. They were great, but there's also, there was room to grow, right? With so many small businesses back further in line because they didn't already have established credit or they weren't big enough. So I think right now where the city's at is we have this next iteration of capital flow design. And I'd like to see that apparatus be more refined, learn the lessons from the data, make sure that the capital is getting to businesses what the highest need. Of course, those are businesses that are already experiencing barriers to capital, minority-owned, women-owned businesses, smaller businesses with fewer employees. There's much more to say, keeping our workforce housed. I love the open air market approaches that are kind of creating more of a destination, kind of capitalizing on folks' need to be outside and how that relates to commerce. I think there's so much innovation that small businesses are doing that we can be celebrating and grounding. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Kayla. I let you go longer on the 30 seconds there because I knew about your intro, so not a problem. Thank you. Let's move on now to Elizabeth. Elizabeth Conlon, please.
Yeah, so I think I agree with what a lot of other people said. While there are small programs that the city can do to lend support, a lot of the programs with microloan programs and the grant programs from earlier this year, we did get that money from the federal government. So we really need to partner and work with state and federal government to get more federal money so that we can have further rounds of this for the, you know, the small and local businesses here. I understand that our local businesses need grants, they need rent relief, and they need debt relief. And so I will be vigorous in trying to pursue money so that we can supply that for our local businesses. Talking about an impactful policy that I think will ultimately help local businesses in our city is housing. And this won't be the last time tonight you will hear me talk about housing. But I think that a lot of benefit from our local community and our local businesses will come from really investing in housing in the City of Santa Cruz. I think this will help us in the short, medium, and long term. In the short term, this could help the city budget by getting fees and taxes related to new residential and mixed-use development. In the medium term, this will help put people back to work. It will generate property tax revenue. Right now, we're seeing all-time-high median home value prices in coastal California. Mortgage interest rates are low and there's still pent-up demand because this pandemic and the economic recession has not hit equitable, has not hit everyone evenly. And people who were planning to buy a home are still planning to buy a home. And there's a lot of demand in the City of Santa Cruz. And there's an opportunity to get more property tax revenue by making it easier for people to build, whether it's duplexes, fourplexes, larger apartment complexes, mixed use, and really building that sort of density and that sort of community, not just in downtown, but all around Santa Cruz, I think is going to help local businesses ultimately. It's going to further build the community. I know that one of the great sources of support for local businesses is that there is so much deep community appreciation here and strong patronage for our local businesses. And so if we simply have more people in our neighborhoods, that will allow more people to buy locally and to support our local businesses. It'll also help in the long term, building a more resilient city because it will improve affordability for the service and hospitality workers. I know that prior to the pandemic, recruiting and retaining employees, especially in lower-wage service jobs, is really difficult for the business community. And so I really think we need to adopt this long-term investment in our community by making it easier to build more types of housing for our low-income and middle-class workers.
All right. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. We'll move on now to Maria. Maria Cadenas.
Hey, everybody. Thank you. You know, when it comes to local businesses, they're at the heart of how we can thrive as a community. Businesses provide us services, jobs, and goods, and it's important that we keep them here. We have actually, the majority of our businesses here in Santa Cruz are really small businesses. We're talking about nine employees or less. So when we're talking about economic recovery, the reality is that it's an economic recovery that was on the way to be made anyway without the pandemic. We were looking at a vast majority of our small businesses that were owned by baby boomers who were going to be looking to retire in five to 10 years. That would have completely disrupted a job market, as well as the quality and the social fabric that we know to be Santa Cruz. What the pandemic did was accelerate all of those pressures. You know, we already were facing, especially for retail businesses that were competing against global markets with Amazon and other online retailers. Again, this has accelerated with the pandemic. We also had businesses that are dependent on seasonal flows of consumers, whether it's hospitality and tourism, right? And also on, why we say lower-wage service workers and hospitality workers that can no longer afford to live here. So we had this compounding of importing of labor really from South County that also contributed to the issue around climate. So when we're talking about our local business thriving and resources available to them, we have to think about it really holistically. Yes, climate, yes, housing, all of that is part of it. But most importantly, we have vehicles available right now that we can accentuate. I think that one of the things that we have to be very cognizant and open about is that Bonnie has done a tremendous job of making sure that we have a presence and that we are listened to at the state level. We definitely need to advocate at the state level or the federal level for more funding because the city will not have enough. And we need to look extremely at our neighbors. A regional approach to economic development is required. As a city, we alone cannot do it. But we have Highway One that goes all the way to Monterey, all the way to Santa Cruz. We have tremendous small-to-medium-sized manufacturing opportunities down in South County and in Monterey that could expand into Santa Cruz and provide manufacturing that fits the lifestyle and the values of Santa Cruz and provides a worker fit based on the workforce that we have currently in Santa Cruz and more living wage jobs, which we need. At the end of the day, I do think that we need to also look at, yes, the loans to businesses, but really focus them on those that were most impacted, which are those owned by women and people of color. And also look at our procurement policies and our vendor contracts to prioritize our local markets so that businesses have local markets and that they can lean on. And that includes also expanding mixed-use buildings that create commercial centers like downtown, where you have retail and the markets and the consumers in the same space. I think all of those are strategies that we need to be very thoughtful about to help enact the communities and ecosystems that we need. And lastly, I'm a strong advocate of local capital. We need to create local capital vehicles here that allow our money to circulate in our local community. And I think that's extremely important, how we look at that. So those are only a few starts of how we can move forward, but it does require a focused approach and making sure that we're looking as a city, but also as a region and not stop tapping into state resources.
Thank you, Maria. We have two left. Let's make our second the last one. Kelsey Hill, Kelsey, you're up, please.
Thanks so much. So I was in a similar boat. I think I assumed that I missed a memo about the statement in the beginning needing to be briefed, so I apologize for that.
We'll give you an extra 30 seconds. How's that?
Okay, well, thanks so much. I want to first start by saying thank you to the Santa Cruz Business Council for allowing me to be here today. And I also want to express gratitude to my fellow candidates, my forum buddies, for making these forums a stimulating, engaging process. You know, this has been a back-to-back forum last night and tonight. So as we continue to support our business community, I agree that we need to continue to mobilize rapidly, stay flexible, collaborate when possible, to make sure that our businesses have the support they need to get through this pandemic and also into the recovery. With the recent announcement from the Federal Reserve about interest rates being kept low for at least the next several years to promote our economic recovery, I think now is a good time to widely promote and expand our business loan programs, such as the Santa Cruz Existing Grow Santa Cruz Loan Program that was mentioned for small and medium-sized local businesses. such as the Santa Cruz Existing Grow Santa Cruz Loan Program that was mentioned for small and medium sized local businesses. We should also be proactively engaging with local businesses and our community to ensure widespread awareness of that program, I think. Provide more technical assistance to help businesses access and secure those loans and redouble our partnership with local lending institutions that are already offering those small business administration or SBA loans. By leveraging the current low interest rate, we can help our local businesses access the funds they need to adequately adapt to this pandemic, survive and thrive in these unprecedented times. I think this is also particularly important for businesses that are owned by women and by Black Indigenous and POC communities. Along the lines of federal income streams, you know, as our role as city leaders is to employ creative, outside-the-box type thinking in terms of the ways that we can support the struggling members of our community and our businesses. And I'm committed to exploring every possible avenue to keep our businesses in our business community afloat. And that means people staying employed when our businesses are staying afloat, people staying housed, fed, kids remaining in soccer uniforms, things like that. So on a creative note as well, when we open back up, I think there's a role the city can play in either on the public education front or utilizing public space to create momentum around the community for support of our public businesses. We're seeing that creativity now in our open air spaces and the other innovative ideas that have been leveraged to get people to support those public business, or those small businesses. And I'm excited to get to work to explore how we can keep that momentum up into our recovery period. In the longer view, I'm also deeply committed to continuing our city's support of the Regional Public Bank effort and believe collaboration between elected leaders can help push this progress along. Down the line, a public bank can be a critical asset in the long-term viability of our businesses. A regional public bank is also the only way that our community, in terms of the Central Coast community, can generate its own wealth and that wealth can stay within our local coffers. Furthermore, you know, it's not a tax, it's not a fee, it's not a fine. It's a different way to approach how we finance our communities and the way we move our money through projects and our businesses. And I think we need to keep our eye on that prize. It's advocacy that I'm already involved with in the People for Public Banking and I'm excited about the potential opportunities that it holds for our local economy. I'll leave it there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kelsey. Our final candidate for question number one, it will be Sandy Brown. Sandy.
Yeah, thank you. So I, like many others who have spoken, agree that there is no one most important policy or program. For me, I think that there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach to the way the, the economic crisis in our business community is playing out. We need to meet business owners where they're at and deploy kind of the, you know, use the package or suite of tools that we have available to us as they, as they are, as they emerge and as they are, as we can apply them to various kind of needs. So technical assistance and training, I think, is something that we, the city has invested in and we, we do, I think, a really great job of partnering and collaborating with our local business community, with our financial institutions. I think we can, you know, we definitely need to do more of that. And, you know, I want to give a big shout out to our Economic Development Director Bonnie Lipscomb because she really does. And her and her small and mighty team do an amazing job of, you know, identifying funding sources. You know, just kind of, you know, figuring out how best to help our local business community and work together. So, you know, I, I, so I want to say that I, you know, I think that all of that work, I want to continue to support it and provide, you know, whatever, you know, whatever support we can to help grow those efforts. In terms of, you know, funding streams, we have, you know, we have a very limited ability to help finance or, you know, sort of subsidize businesses. And, you know, what I, I think that the most important thing that we can do is use this, the, kind of the tools that we have. So for example, outdoor dining and cafes, I think that, you know, it's, we've been, you know, the community has been asking for that for years and years. And now, you know, it took this kind of crisis to kind of, to motivate folks to, to really figure out how to make that happen. And I think we should be looking at, you know, similar creative and innovative ways of, of supporting local businesses with what they say they need and what they would like to do. And so I think to me, that's kind of in terms of the, the current situation, those are my priorities. I would say, you know, cooperative and employee-owned businesses is, is, you know, I mean, I love this, this topic and I could talk about it for days. I was involved, actually I led the effort to turn Swanton Berry Farm into an employee-owned business, which we successfully did. And I think if, you know, a local farm with low, you know, low-paid agricultural workers can do it, that it can be done in other instances. You know, I also think that we, you know, we, we have not had our fair share of stimulus money. And, you know, we, that's just a variable that we cannot control, but to the extent that we can lobby for those resources and then use them in collaboratively with the community and, you know, local businesses. The last thing I'll say, I know I'm out of time, but I, I just want to say, right now, what I am hearing from downtown many local businesses, under-resourced businesses, is that because of their inability to generate income, they can't pay their rents and yet their rent is still coming due. And so I think that providing some rent relief and a commercial property eviction moratorium right now would be something the city could absolutely do that would make a big difference. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy. I'll turn it over to the next question to my colleague Kara. Kara.
Thank you, Steve. Just a reminder to everybody that you can hit the chat button at the bottom of your screen and contribute questions. It looks like we will have time at the end for audience questions. So the next question is, businesses have listed the cost of housing as an obstacle to attract and retain employees. Santa Cruz Local has also heard in surveys and interviews with more than 100 city residents that people want more housing options. What steps will you take to make it easier to build new housing for all income levels in the city of Santa Cruz? And back to Sandy Brown.
All right. Thank you. This is a really, really critical question. I, so I guess I'll say upfront that, you know, the lack of affordable housing, the affordable housing crisis is the, the number one issue that I have tried to work on in my first term on city council. I, I actually have a kind of a fundamentally different approach and understanding of what the, the problem is here. I, I just don't believe that supply, that the, the supply-demand curve bends towards affordability in a community like this. Affordable housing does not just happen through additional supply. We are in a highly desirable coastal community, needless to say, next door to the world's biggest economic engine. And so we have, you know, some significant pressures, you know, and so we, and we, we are not well-equipped in terms of our job space to deal with that. So we have a real jobs-housing mismatch. I think that in order to get affordable housing, which is never going to meet the, the need entirely, what we need to be very deliberate about how we do that. We need to be talking about using city-owned properties, leveraging other additional resources in order to get 100% affordable housing projects built. I know that we have, you know, again, Bonnie Lipscomb, props to her, you know, has been working diligently on that and we are seeing the results of that, but we need to do more. And I think affordable, affordability in housing needs to be the central focus, the lens through which we look at all of our policy decisions around housing and development. So for me, you know, yeah, I don't, I don't really hear people, I'm sorry Kara, but, and I appreciate you asking the question, but I don't really hear people saying they want, they need a lot of housing options. They need housing. They need affordable housing. They need a housing that they can afford to live in. And the fact that we don't have different housing options is, is an important area that we need to address. And I, I agree that we keep smaller units and higher density is going to be a, a way to help, help us move through that. But it's not going to solve our problem. We are building higher-density, smaller units that are actually, you know, they're higher, you know, above what the market rate rents were. And so, you know, I think that, that the regulatory arena and the kind of incentives and, and, you know, resource arena are the two ways that we can really work to get affordable housing built. The market's just not going to do it for us.
Okay, I'll, I'll move to the next candidate. Kayla Kumar.
Awesome. Yeah. So I believe the city council should be spending considerable energy on the development of housing that is accessible for the people that are bearing the brunt of our housing crisis most. And that is of course, the very low, the low and the moderate income levels. I'm excited about housing solutions, one of which Sandy mentioned, which is the city using its land to develop 100% affordable housing, the, the like of which reflects the needs of Santa Cruz. There's, there might be single occupancy, but there might be units for families. There's a ton of families here that also need housing and also of course, the diversity of income levels and the struggle that is, that is prominent for those of us who make under the median income level. I do think that partnering with nonprofit developers will be, will be a strength in that, that kind of approach. In the, in the longer term, I also support emerging approaches to our housing crisis like community land trusts, housing land trusts and regional public banking. Community land trusts are nonprofits that create pathways for the community to collectively invest in the development and purchase of housing units and make them permanently affordable. And a public bank, Kelsey explained it better than I could. It's a commercial bank that's owned by governmental body and, and for a variety of other reasons makes available cheaper, less expensive capital, localizes our community's wealth and reduces development costs. So I think partnering with our local emerging coastal commons land trust, of which I'm, I'm a, a member of, if the city were to partner with that land trust as it's, as it's emerging to, to be developing this kind of project as the kind of I outlined earlier. That would be, I think, really, really exciting, really innovative. I'm sorry, Robert, I've totally lost you on this screen. We're busy.
You still have time.
Okay, cool. And then, you know, I'd like to reiterate too, building housing is not the only way to solve our housing crisis problem. There, there is also bringing back housing units that are currently on the speculative market into the housing market so that people can live in them and not just use them as investment, a part of their investment portfolio. Especially right now where folks are struggling to hang on, struggling to stay housed. We don't want to hollow out our community and have folks with higher capital come in and, and buy up land and build their, their insurance portfolio on the backs of Santa Cruz. I certainly want to be a council member that would welcome that. So vacancy fees are a more mid, mid to longer-term strategy to decentivize this kind of speculative behavior that doesn't help us get housing units on the market. And so I will, I'll probably just leave it there.
Thank you. Elizabeth Conlon.
Yeah, housing is really what is, one of the main things motivating me to run for office. I mean, I understand that housing is personal, whether you happen to own your house or whether you're a renter like me. You know, I think we've all seen this year that this is acutely true, you know, with, with the impacts of the pandemic, whether that's resulted in a family member or a friend moving back, moving in with you or having housing instability with the fires, you know, many of us, new people who were evacuated. And so having safe, stable housing is absolutely essential. And as a member of council, I will pursue a mix of policies to promote both deed-restricted affordable housing and middle-income housing. I think all of the candidates here support using city-owned land in the downtown to build 100% affordable housing. And I support having tall buildings downtown. That means that we can get more affordable units. We'll be able to have more different types of units so we can have larger units that will support families. In terms of promoting missing middle housing, I think that we should look to Portland and consider pursuing a progressive infill policy like they recently did that promotes a combination of ADUs. Duplexes, fourplexes are now legalized on most lots in Portland. And they had a really great incentive structure that you could build up to six units on one parcel if half those units were deed-restricted affordable. So I'd really like to see Santa Cruz pursuing the sort of progressive, inclusive, affordable policies that Portland recently adopted. In addition to upzoning and height limits, I really want to help continue to build the coalition around affordable housing and around housing opportunities for everyone in the community. I'm involved in an advocacy group, Santa Cruz YMB, and we advocate for more housing for all income levels. I also think that there are a lot of opportunities to, um, not only change zoning on residential land, but also allowing for more mixed-use zoning around the city. I think that with commercial vacancies in the pandemic, there's a lot of opportunities to think about how do we best use this land? How do we combine, you know, business and, and residential, residential land better? And so I just think that it's really important that the city looks seriously and takes bold action to address housing affordability for low-income workers and also for the middle class so that, you know, people who work for our government, who make just a little bit too much to meet the criteria for middle-income restricted housing can also afford to live in our city. I don't think that we should be, be forcing our teachers to, to live in South County because they can't afford to live in Santa Cruz. So that's, that's really the vision I see that we, we come around. We pursue a lot of different housing options and we make sure that people have real opportunities to afford to live here, whether they're families, whether they're elderly, whether they're students.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Maria Kadanas.
Thank you for that question. You know, housing is without a doubt something that we need to address. And it's an issue that's been building over the years. The fact is that we haven't built enough affordable housing for decades or met our goals, as stated through arena goals. We need to look at low-income and extremely low-income housing, but in order to afford to do 100% affordable, we need strong advocacy at the state level and at the federal level to bring in dollars. Nonprofit developers are facing really an uphill battle and in terms of creating the mix of capital needed to provide for those projects that are only sustainable based on the cash flow of those units. So we need to be very thoughtful as a city on how we can partner to make sure that we bring more capital for the, for the development of affordable housing. And that includes our public land. I mean, I am a very strong advocate of looking at our surface lots downtown and finding housing opportunities that can advocate for. I'm also a strong advocate of mixed-use buildings. Again, as, as part of development, as part of creating community and, and the density. It doesn't mean that we're going to change who we are as a city. We can develop beautiful downtown that is walkable, that has common space, that has open space, but includes more density for the workers that live here. You know, I recently launched UndocuFund Monterey Bay, which was focused on providing relief aid from the pandemic to undocumented workers in the Monterey Bay region. And at the time, I thought the majority of the funds will be going to the agricultural communities. What shocked me was that within the first month, the majority of funds were coming to the city of Santa Cruz. And talking to the families that are living here for 10, 20 years in overcrowded conditions means that the issue of housing is not about a growth in population. It is about providing dignity and quality life and a roof over the heads of our neighbors that have lived here and made this city possible. I think it is both a moral imperative and an economic imperative that we address housing thoughtfully. And in, there is no simple solution. We need to look at zoning, including in our single-family residential areas. We need to revisit our parking structures outside of downtown and what kind of parking changes we need to allow to allow for more duplexes. We need to expand the ADU development in ways that are, they are deed or restricted to affordable housing components and rules. So all of those pieces are part of it. And the other one is that for the affordable housing that we have, we need to keep people housed. We cannot afford to lose properties that are affordable to speculative markets. We need to keep affordable properties there and we need to ensure that we provide enough protections for the tenants that are currently renters like myself. You know, I've been renting here for almost 10 years and I'm very happy with my landlord. They're a wonderful couple. However, we cannot depend on the generosity of a landlord to ensure that people are housed. We need to create and build on what the state has passed to ensure that people are housed. And most importantly, And most importantly, we need to think regionally into the housing matter. We need strong advocacy in Sacramento because if, if Silicon Valley, if Monterey don't build the housing that they need to build, they will continue to pressure our region. And I actually agree with Sandy, we cannot build our way into affordability. The truth is we live in an extremely desirable part of the world and there will continue to be demand. But if we want to create a worker fit where our workers can live here, then we need to look at the mix and how we thoughtfully approach it to ensure that the workers that are here can live here. And that includes looking at zoning and capital and, and making sure that we prioritize what we say we're going to prioritize specifically. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Maria. You're, we're at time. Sonia Brunner.
Thank you. So anyone who spends more than 30% of household income is considered cost burden and anyone who spends more than 50% is severely burdened. And in 2018, nearly 21,000 of the 35,000 renter households in Santa Cruz were considered cost burden. Rent growth has outpaced income growth in Santa Cruz. And even among middle income households, income, house, housing consumes a larger share of income than 20 years ago. And the impacts of COVID-19 and the CZU fires has created an even bigger need. And in order for Santa Cruz to thrive, we really need to focus on housing that is equitably available to people across a wide range of incomes. From young adults, I have a son, he's 25, just starting out, having options to be able to afford and to seniors. I know a lot of seniors who want to spend their remaining years feeling secure on a fixed income and, and including expanded access to housing affordable to people who are at risk of or experiencing homelessness. So the lack of available housing, as in the question that's asked, is certainly affecting our local business community. As many people are unable to afford to live and work in the city and have to move to outskirts areas. And our teachers, our social workers, our service workers need to be able to afford to live where they work and contribute to our community. So the purpose of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for example, is to assist in the creation and preservation of affordable housing in Santa Cruz for low and moderate income households. And to make it easier to build new housing in the city of Santa Cruz, I would look at what the city has already done. For example, the approved moving forward with the downtown library affordable housing development and prioritizing funds from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund for this project, as well as applying for grants like the Local Housing Trust Fund Matching Grant from the state of California. I believe that is funding the Metro Pacific Station Affordable Housing Development Downtown. Thank you, Robert. And buying and rehabilitation of potential cooperatives assisting with multifamily rehabilitation programs, construction of accessory dwelling units and really simplifying the permitting process for homeowners to streamline building ADUs, exploring the private and public partnerships to fund more low income and affordable housing, incentivizing developers to provide housing through the project based voucher program and really supporting different types of housing from micro apartments to fourplexes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sonia. Kelsey Hill.
Thanks. Yeah, so affordable housing is a deeply personal issue to me, like a lot of people here. There was one point after I got out of university that I worked three jobs at once, just to be able to comfortably pay my rent and pay my bills to be able to stay here. So I am acutely aware of this crisis and I will work with commitments, I will be committed to work on this issue to actually solve it. In regards to the, the city housing crisis, I would work with my fellow council members to create an affordable housing task force to give our housing crisis the serious dedicated attention it demands. This task force could locate potential project locations, funding sources, work with community members and local developers, define desired project characteristics and reduce unnecessary red tape for projects that meet those criteria. And I would push for 100% affordable deed restricted housing on city owned land. I support building density downtown. I support mixed use projects that are appropriate for the space that it's being proposed in. And I also think we can look to projects like the Water Street Project, the Mid Penn Development on the 17th, to push for affordable housing in a way that also meets other cores of our social justice values. Similarly, as a council member, it's really important to me that we negotiate with developers to ensure that we're getting as many affordable units as possible in every project that crosses the council dais. I don't think that we've done a very good job of making sure that developers are being held accountable to the deepest affordability possible. And in combating a crisis that deeply impacts students, people who are low and very low income, which, you know, predominantly are, has a disproportionate impact on people of color, the priority must be building housing that's accessible to those levels. Continuing to push for housing that is exclusive to people that can afford market rate is not going to make a significant dent in these overlapping crises. And I've also heard from community members about who live in ADUs, which were greenlit to combat the housing crisis that we're experiencing and the concerns that there's not enough types of housing, that those ADUs are now getting to the point where they're unaffordable for the people that they were aimed to help out, which evidences that the affordability crisis cannot be conquered by simply just building more types of housing. We need affordable housing that is affordable to the people who need to be, to be able to live here. And when we have truly affordable housing, it's also a benefit to our businesses. It's a benefit to our climate. Workers are more productive when they don't have to commute and there's an obvious climate benefit when we build affordable housing near transportation and good jobs. And so I'm looking forward to working toward agreements that both fast track housing developments and also check off some of those boxes that I mentioned for deep affordability that our community clearly needs. And on a last note, I want to touch on something that has a lot of traction and a lot of different pockets in our community and is gaining speed in other parts of the country, and that's a vacancy tax or a second home tax. I'm supportive of approaching voters on the ballot about taxing owners of empty or second homes. And those real estate owners are predominantly members who are not in our local community anyway. And I'm interested in diverting funds into a pot of money that could be used to rapidly build affordable housing to meet the needs of this tri crisis, if you will.
Thank you, Kelsey. Shebra Khantari Johnson.
Thank you, Cara. Yeah, housing is a public health issue. It's a social equity issue and it impacts so many other areas of our community and our society. Maria said we need to keep people housed. Absolutely. Once someone is unhoused, it is very difficult to have them be put back in a pathway to housing. I've worked on the issue of homelessness, houselessness over the last two decades. And as you all know, it's a huge issue in our community. Currently, I'm working with the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project that focuses on transition age youth, youth under the age of 24. And I will just share 28% of our last point in time count were transition age youth who are homeless. And of those youth, upwards of 60% come from our foster care system. So they are transitioning out of our foster care system and working multiple jobs. And there aren't enough houses and the houses that are here are not affordable for them. So it's, and we have a numbers issue. So I'm just going to share some data. Since 2000, Santa Cruz has grown by 8,000, 8,700 people here in our community, but we're losing families and we're losing our workforce. We have 4,550 fewer citizens aged 25 to 54. And we have 1,340 fewer young children. So I can't remember who, who said this, but our community is, the housing that we have in our community will reflect, will be reflective of who we are as a community. So one of the, so what can we do? One of the things that I think we need to do is look at our state legislation and partner with our state legislators. I know that currently, for example, there's currently state legislation, AB 1486. This would make it easier for school districts to shift their school land and build housing for teachers and staff. So that's just one example, but we need to think outside the box and we need to look at what opportunities there are at the state level and partner with the state and advocate so that we have more opportunities to build. Certainly, we need to align with the general, the general plan housing element and our housing blueprint that I know have gone through a lot of process and been vetted by committees and the community. And in, within the general plan and the, and the blueprint, accessibility and affordability are areas that we need to focus on. So, oh, already at 30 seconds. So citing is important, inventory of the sites that we have available and then looking at building a range of mixed use housing for all levels of income, certainly low income, middle income. And again, our workforce and our seniors that we're losing out. And this, a lot of this has been said, expediting and streamlining our permitting process, looking at updating our outdated zoning and bringing in funding. But in the end, we need to say yes to housing because it's going to become more dire than it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Shebra. Martine Watkins.
Great, thank you so much for the question. I, you know, I value diversity in our community and that requires that we have diverse housing. And throughout my time on the council, the past four years, I voted for housing because I know we need more workforce housing and other types of housing that affects all types of members, seniors, and get them closer to our, our services. You know, I served on the Housing Blueprint Subcommittee and part of that process was really about using a robust community engagement approach to design housing solutions and making inroads to affordability. And part of that is looking at housing production, housing protection, as well as factoring in community vitality in all that we do. And so with that, there's things that we can do and there's actually policies really ready to go. And they've been vetted by a criteria that really looked at, you know, ease of access to, to accomplish. So the factoring of how do we streamline that has been thought through in terms of the process. One of the things we can do is continue to legalize or look to legalize some of our unpermitted red tag dwelling units. And we could do that by also looking if we wanted to incentivize what that legalization could look like in terms of increasing section eight or having it be deemed affordable. We had, as a council, actually really were ahead of the curve in terms of the state policy for ADUs. And we want to streamline ADU production and we could do that by having sort of these pre-designed plans that have been pre-approved for, for community members who want to pursue ADUs. And, and those are generally just homeowners, right? And so they're not developers. So having those systems in place can streamline and increase efficiency. We can also look at allowing how we're going to approach junior ADUs or how we can get creative with some of our detached slots and efficiency around that. You know, fee waivers to encourage more affordable housing development and, you know, looking at our inclusionary percentage and being really mindful of how do we get the most affordability possible. But as I've heard many times on council, is that if you have, you know, this X percent of, of inclusionary, then X percent, you know, 20, 25, whatever you want to use, of zero is zero. So we have to be, be able to balance to just really look at the information, the data to do the best we can to ensure that we're able to get more housing. Downtown, really, we voted to, on the council, to really prioritize downtown. That was also the voices of the community, getting people closer to their places of work, being able to walk to the store, be able to walk to their jobs. I'd like to see more childcare downtown. We don't want them driving across town for childcare and then coming back. And then looking at how as a government, we're able to use some of our existing resources as we are, especially looking for downtown. At the end of the day, as everybody has said, it's, it's a critical issue for our community. And so we have to have the ability to put some of these policies and these values into action and work with our communities so that they reflect what they, they envision as well. And I'm committed to doing that as I have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your answers. I look forward to digging into the nuances around this very complex issue in our, in Santa Cruz locals' one-on-one interviews with you over the next few days. I'll turn it over back to Steve.
Yeah, thanks. Off script, real quick, I just want to say, I commend all of you for wanting to actually run this year. This is obviously, 2020 is an unprecedented year. It's been my favorite word to use, unprecedented. And why is that? Well, of course, we all know why with COVID, businesses all around the world are struggling and many will be closing if they haven't already. But what makes us different, unique here? Well, we're not completely alone, but we're a tourist town. So with our seasonal tourism, that really puts a big asterisk there. So what, what, what can we do? Well, how can the city help the small businesses make up revenue losses that they're going to see this year for those that have been impacted so far? New order this time, let's start with Shebra. Shebra.
I just knew you were going to call on me.
I'm sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you for that question. So I would say the first thing I want to do is to come to you. We have a lot of brilliant minds in our community and a lot of innovative business leaders. I know that there's been a survey that's gone out to the businesses. So we need to continue to communicate with our business leaders in the community and ask you about your ideas and ask you what you need. The, the needs will continue to change. We need to continue to support businesses directly through local and outside relief funds. We've already mentioned bringing in state and federal funds, again, something that I've done many times in the past. And in fact, during COVID, I've secured two grants over $2 million. Continue to partner with our community foundations, with our, our local banks and see how we can work with businesses to streamline and ease any permitting processes for businesses that are trying to open or reopen. Another important piece is working with our public health. I know that testing can be difficult and if an employee has symptoms and they have to be sent home for the safety of that employee and the business, working to make that faster so that the employee can return and the business can be up and running. We also should look, work with public health to look at, seek out and look at data that gives us insights around where the virus is being contracted and how it's being contracted. So we can get creative and be responsive in the policies that we have in our community around our businesses and just do everything that we can to promote public health recommendations so we can move to that orange tier as soon as possible. And I'll just share one example. I, I serve on the Board of Power Valley Community Health Trust. I'm the board chair and the board has been, the organization's been tasked with working with Santa Cruz County to allocate relief funds, $350,000 of relief funds, predominantly in South County, because that's where we see disproportionate numbers. And so the funds will be to really put forward messaging and promote public health so that again, we can move to that next tier and have our local businesses open up. We have some opportunities before us. The, the weather is still nice and we have a couple more months of that. I know that the Economic Development Department is working with the local businesses on the Let's Cruz Again campaign. I just watched that video. So really, again, thinking outside the box and, and safely bringing in visitors to our community. The holiday season is among us. We can put a strong campaign out there to get offline and go into town, wear our masks and shop locally. And I just want to say, we have strong businesses. Bookshops, Santa Cruz survived the earthquake. They survived a corporate bookshop next to them. They survived Kindle and they've survived the recession in 2008. So I want to go to these businesses and generate ideas with working with businesses. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Shebra. And I am missing the Wine and Roses event this year, my favorite event every year with the Health Trust.
Oh, wait, it's happening online, but I'll.
I know, we were just talking today about it. Let's move on to Kelsey Hill, please.
Yeah, sorry about that. My Zoom spazzed for a second. But yeah, I'd like to begin by saying that I was really inspired by the local effort at the start of the pandemic to immediately support our small businesses through, you know, posting on social media about takeout or promoting special deals. And I think that it shows that our community values our small businesses and that local first character that we have here. I know I for one got, I'm still getting a bunch of takeout from my favorite restaurants to make sure that they're staying afloat. But you know, that really goes to show the impact of public education campaigns and in endorsing the need to really help see our businesses through the duration of this crisis. I'd love to see an increased effort on top of what the city is already doing to help people get plugged into those small businesses. You know, as mentioned, the holiday season is coming up, so making sure that there's robust public education campaigns about how you best and safely can support the businesses that are closest to your heart. In terms of policy, I'd like to continue the Pacific Street closure, like I mentioned in my first comment, and permitting, permitting for open air business, explore ways to accommodate businesses in colder months so that they continue to operate safely during the course of this pandemic. I've also heard interest from businesses to continue that. I've also heard interest from businesses to continue that innovative approach through the course of the recovery as it gives brick and mortar businesses an increased ability to bring in revenue. I think Sandy mentioned that the businesses have been wanting open air dining forever. And now we are finally learning from this lesson that this is a real creative endeavor for our businesses to learn how to adapt and thrive. And so I think, again, we should learn from the lessons we're gleaning from COVID and use as many spaces as possible that people can get out safely and support our local businesses. I'm also invested in continuing the dialogue between the council and business members. As I know that this is an ever-changing landscape for our businesses. You know, I'm only one person and I can't possibly fathom what all our different businesses are experiencing in terms of the challenges they're facing. But as a council member, I would make sure to keep that door open so that any gaps that the council can fill, you know, I'm wary of. And as the pandemic continues, especially if we continue to go back and forth between opening and closing, the council should assist our small businesses through continued recovery planning, continuing to funnel those microloans to impacted firms through the existing resilience program, exploring those alternative streams of funding through support or through such programs and aiding technically to our businesses. As I mentioned, the council has the capacity to fill those gaps, mediate certain problems as they arise for our businesses. And I think that's a major role that our council is going to fill in the coming years. In the longer term, I'm also supportive of decisions that seek to revitalize our economy in ways that build resilience that aren't dependent on a tourist season. One such endeavor, I feel some excitement over, is making the Warriors a permanent resident in Santa Cruz. And I believe that doing so could create a lasting and sustainable economic stimulus for our economy in our downtown, one that keeps our wealth generating locally. I'd love to see that project really leverage as many local partnerships as possible to keep those dollars internally in our city. And I'm interested in helping facilitate that progress on council to keep the team here and would advocate for a private partnership that can ensure financial viability despite the looming recession. And I'll leave it there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kelsey. Yeah, Casey and I are at every game. So, yeah. Let's move on to Maria, please.
Thank you. You know, when we're looking at supporting our small businesses, the first and foremost thing is capital. Businesses live and die on cash flow. And so we need to do everything we can to, again, we've got to advocate in Sacramento. We want to lean in the expertise that we have locally and attract money so that we can provide that cash flow support to our local businesses so that they can thrive. We also need to be very realistic. Like I said, the issue with retail, for example, and a dependence on tourism is not new. The pandemic simply accelerated what was already coming. I think that we need to be working with workforce development and others to see what businesses are viable for succession that, whose acceleration of exit has come about and look at ways that we can look at business ownership, such as cooperative or other ways that enable their employees to become the owners. There's plenty of capital for that. There's also vehicles at the state level that allow for raising capital for those conversions. And there's ways that we can do that. It will keep our local businesses local. It will increase the wealth of those workers that were working on those businesses. And it will ensure that we keep some of them around. And I also believe that as a city and working with the county, we need to be looking at our procurement and vendor policies so that we can expand the local markets and opportunities for local businesses, whether they're landscaping or house cleaning. These are businesses that are providing services to our region and we should have a local preference strengthened to have really Santa Cruz for Santa Cruz. Let's have a really strong local campaign that really advocates for our local businesses to, so that they have an expanded market. And yes, the open streets and other vehicles are great. How do we make it sustainable? How do we ensure when we talk to those businesses that it actually is penciling out? Are they making money with it? What is their feeling about it? It's really about feedback from those employers and business owners as much as the employees, because the employees are carrying a huge burden to keep these businesses open. So we need a conversation to make sure that it's a win-win for everybody, right? So I think that's part of it. When it comes to the commercial property, you know, when we're looking at housing crisis, we've got to understand the commercial property is the other coin of our housing crisis. And those businesses are brick and mortar, are paying rent or paying off leases, need some kind of support. We need to explore how we can ensure that they can stay there. Again, it's impacting their cash flow. We want to make sure that we address those issues wholeheartedly. And then really beyond the short-term recovery ICU, Robert, we need to think about how do we expand the type of industries that we have in Santa Cruz, leverage. Look, we have UCSC, we have great talent, we have a highly educated workforce. We have a lot of innovators. We have a lot of creativity and innovation in companies that have come out of Santa Cruz. How do we feed into it so that we create different industries that are year-round, provide higher wages so that our workforce can live here and be sure to provide the tax revenue that our city will need?
Great. Thank you so much. Next up is Sandy Brown.
So, yeah, so some of the things that I'm going to say are a bit of a repeat from the first question that you all asked. You know, I think that most important is really meeting businesses where they're at because the experience and the hardship that different businesses are facing is, you know, there's really, really a lot of difference among local businesses. So I think that's a lot of the things that have been talked about here, certainly, you know, open streets and, you know, other ways that we can support, maintain and improve upon our infrastructure to serve, you know, to facilitate businesses serving the community, kind of outside of the traditional environment setting. So I think that those are things that the city really is pretty well-equipped to do. People are, I heard the word nimble a lot, and I really think that that's one of the the wonderful things about our economic development program and our department. They are, you know, they can make things happen pretty quickly. And we've seen that. And I think that, you know, encouraging more of that is going to be really important. You know, I think that, you know, the, obviously, our tourist economy has suffered greatly. You know, our industry and, you know, I hear that a lot from, I'm on the Visit Santa Cruz Board and, you know, talking with local businesses. And I think we're well-positioned to kind of capture some of that tourism of people who are not moving, not going to far-flung vacation locations. So I think that that's, there's some possibility there, but at the same time, we are, you know, we don't actually capture a whole lot of revenue out of that because a lot of people who are coming regionally are staying for the day and they're, you know, bringing their own food, et cetera. So I think that trying to find ways to create synergies to, so that people who come here feel like there's accessible places to, you know, get their snacks and get, you know, and do other business. I think that we have a lot of, you know, opportunity to do more of that. I certainly think that, you know, our microloan program and the kind of figuring out what to do about this, this rent crisis that people are experiencing, that local businesses are experiencing are really key. And so I'll leave it there with those two as a major priorities for me.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sandy. Let's move on to Elizabeth, please.
Yeah, so I understand that it's been a really hard year for the tourism industry, in particular with hospitality and food service. The owners and employees of those businesses really struggling to make ends meet. And, you know, I'm sure many of us have been sad to see some local businesses close and to know people who've been laid off as a result. And so, you know, I think some of this is, of course, outside of our control. When are we, when are we going to get a vaccine? But I do think that we have done a good job and can continue to do a better job communicating health information, information flows to businesses, you know, what do these tiered systems mean? You know, I know the lack of predictability, you know, are we going to move to the orange tier? Are we going to move back up to the purple tier? I know that creates a lot of uncertainty for local businesses. But I think that continuing to communicate information about the requirements, making sure businesses are meeting those requirements is very important. I'd also like to continue to advance and explore those innovative solutions that city staff have been working with, with the business community on, helping them to adapt. Things like the Temporary Outdoor Expansion Area Program and the Parks and Rec Outdoor Fitness Space Rental Program. I think it's, you know, really great that we're utilizing outdoor space, parking lots, street spaces, other outdoor space for salons and restaurants and gyms. And, you know, I'd like to know how we can improve upon that program, expand it, if business owners have other suggestions for how that could be made easier for them. And then I'd also want to work with businesses to ensure that the revenue generating ideas being proposed in the city won't further the economic pain that they're feeling. I think that it's really important that when we're talking about how do we approach the city's budget deficit, that when we're thinking about generating revenue, we also make sure that we are not prolonging economic pain felt by small local businesses. And again, I'll reiterate that, you know, I'll help lobby for that federal assistance for local relief, both rent relief and debt relief. And hopefully, we see Congress step up because we are truly in a crisis. And I know that's true throughout the country. And then just to end on an optimistic note, you know, I really do believe that our tourism industry will rebound due to the sustained regional demand. I think, you know, people have kept coming to Santa Cruz, perhaps even when they shouldn't be. And, you know, so we see just a lot of continued interest in our beaches, in the culture. You know, the student population will return. And I think that we will, we will be able to capitalize on that when it becomes safer for people to gather and to travel more freely. And, you know, I want to continue to foster the art and innovation in the city so that we will continue to have a healthy recovery.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. Let's move on now to Martine.
Great. Thank you so much. You know, as mayor, I got to attend so many ribbon cuttings and be there with the community, with the business owners who took just huge leaps of faith to start their business and to celebrate them. And right now, they need us to support them too. And so some of the things that the city has already done, for example, is putting an executive order in place that has a commission cap for third-party food delivery companies to businesses. We can extend those types of, those types of policies. We can continue to help our businesses pivot and adapt, as has been mentioned, in terms of the outdoor dining options or the ability for them to move their services into the outside. We have to be flexible. We have to be flexible with the rules that we have and be nimble to support them. We can help our businesses also by looking at some of the relief and efforts that are underway and trying to help them access it, as mentioned. Absolutely marketing and promoting the Let's Cruise Again is Awesome, Visit Santa Cruz and the other promotional support that the city can provide so that we can help them balance the reopening stages and hopefully help them just open as, and reopen as safely as possible and to keep their employees employed and their businesses afloat. We could look at waiving and deferring fees and other types of accommodations and also work with our local banks to help them with lending. And over time, you know, all communities really experience changes that affect industries, technologies, land use patterns. And they help form the foundation of their local economies. And we know this firsthand with Santa Cruz as we rebuilt after the earthquake. So our tourism is about our environment, our arts, our organic foods, our amazing local restaurants. We're a community committed to making our environment available to our visitors. And so how do we build on this? Eco-tourism and wellness and the ocean is for all to access. And, you know, it's what is about our story as a community. And my daughters have learned how to surf. I learned how to surf this summer and they've blossomed. So I know firsthand just the magic of what our community and our assets bring. And so as we think about how we want to move forward, we have to think about building back better and getting Santa Cruz on the map for all the things that we do and now post-COVID, what we'll do after. And, you know, economically resilient towns and cities and regions, they do, they just adapt over time. So we have the opportunity to adapt in a way that's going to spur our economy and create opportunity here. And I'm looking forward to working with the business community to help us move forward in that direction. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Martine. Let's go to Kayla, please. Kayla.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing I want to say is I just, I commiserate with the people who, you know, make their livelihoods in tourism right now and all the surrounding fields. You know, I just think this has been unbelievable on a daily basis for so many. And so I just just express my sympathy and I'm rooting for folks, you know, a little bit about how I approach this particular topic and how I really approach everything is a little bit about my process. And that is, I've just been going straight to small businesses, not just downtown, across the city, trying to talk to folks in different fields. And of course, tourism has been one of them. And then, of course, also scaffolding that with, you know, reports from out of the city and then other research that's going on and trying to hit as many of these kind of economic recovery presentations that are, you know, being held from anyone from MBEP to, you know, Chris Benner's Solidarity Economics. And so just a little bit of how I approach research and trying to understand. But at the center of it really are small businesses themselves for me. And I had a conversation with this gentleman once towards the beginning of this. And we're having coffee and he was explaining just how, it just seemed impossible, what he was describing in his business. And he was sitting there and he just started looking off. And I was like, oh, man, like, I felt bad. I was like, did I bring him to, you know, a really dark place right now by talking about this? And what came out of his mouth, he was like, you know, but I've always been wanting to do something that's more online. And I was, I was so taken aback by that because, because this was a moment where I really thought it would be totally acceptable to be like, I'm ruined. And this person was like, what's next for me? How do I innovate? Where's my pivot? What's, what, what way do I meet this moment right now with my ingenuity and with my my grit, my determination that's meeting the moment? I can't have my in-store. But also is helping him navigate the uncertainty and still achieving what I understood from him, which is his greatest purpose was to do something that actually, you know, covered his bills and his livelihood. But he got to bring some benefit to the community and create belonging and create a sense of community through commerce. And so for me, that's, you know, tourism, I have to agree, I do think that tourism will bounce back, especially if measures are taken to support that. But also, I think it's likely to be an opportunity where our local economy diversifies, especially in the next few years. And the questions I ask myself is what can the city do to not only keep afloat what's existing in tourism, but help people pivot if they do want to go, you know, take their ingenuity elsewhere? And of course, this, I have to reiterate, capital is king, especially in the system that we have. So I really stress, I think that that's going to be the place. And that's what I'm hearing from folks is it's a cash flow thing. It's not a, it's not an ingenuity, it's not an imagination thing, right? And so having, I'm really invested in learning more about what the city can do on a capital level. Again, making sure that those flows are equitable and also incentivizing the kind of diversification that could end up creating a more sustainable local economy. Also, the technical assistance, I think, not only that comes with that, that kind of shift in that capital, but also training. I'm hearing a lot of folks that are inundated with needs of training their employees on how to work in the COVID-19 conditions. I wonder what the city can do, creating a more unified approach to that across small business. And I've seen some of it. So I think that's really promising. And then, of course, anything that can be done on this streamlining licensing and fees, again, to incentivize this kind of innovation that I'm, that I'm speaking of. And, you know, I think, I also see here in this pivot that I think is kind of exciting. This gentleman in particular is talking about wanting to do something towards a problem that was existing here locally. So the tourism is such a place-based thing, right? It brings people because of our position, because of our beauty, because of the community. And with our position on the coast, there's also big challenges ahead, particularly around, you know, environmental climate chaos, sea level rise. And so he was like, how do I, how do I shift to addressing the problems that are actually local to Santa Cruz as well? And so I'd love to see greener jobs coming through in this moment that are meeting specific problems that. that are arising and have been around for a long period of time.
Yeah, we are over. We have run over. So sorry, I was trying to let you get there, but we've gone a little bit.
That's quite all right. I would go on and on. Thank you for stopping me.
No problem, no problem. So our last candidate for this question is Sonia Brunner. Sonia.
Hi. So many local businesses are really dependent upon seasonal tourism and have been severely impacted with COVID-19. And in order to understand how the city can help our small business community make up for the loss of revenue, we have to be realistic. Data shows that the consumer confidence is returning, but it's returning slowly and there's still a long way to go and everything is uncertain. People's habits are changing and which is certainly hurting the tourist-based economy, but there's some opportunity in that and there's room to build on our regional drive market. There may be more flexibility this year for weekday off-season visitors as everyone's work and school schedules are evolving. There are opportunities. We need to continue to pursue federal and state funding sources to support our businesses, to get them through this and work with our partners to support driving business and promoting the economy. For example, supporting events, any organizations, programs like the Santa Cruz Warriors, the Roller Derby Girls event Santa Cruz. I sat on the Visit Santa Cruz board for two years and they are all about promoting tourism and Santa Cruz to the world. And that includes bird watching and wine tasting and agriculture. And currently they're doing a Let's Cruise Safely campaign to safely promote to visitors regionally and our locals look out for those videos. The city has been in support of that. We can look at creating an economic recovery task force. That includes business advising and training and assisting small business owners with all areas of business and recovery. You know, and I mentioned earlier partnerships with Economic Development, the Small Business Development Center, the Chamber, and Santa Cruz County Business Council. Robert's a great resource. Looking at funding sources, forgivable loans or low-interest loans and really advocating and applying for federal, state, county grants and funding. Looking at mentorships and networking, coordinating opportunities to strengthen local businesses. I know with the Downtown Association, it's so valuable to have those networking opportunities. And I just recently met with the Newly Formed Midtown Business Association. So those groups are really important to have that local government support, local media support and support around workforce, rehiring, recruiting, training, and really flexibility on all tools that will support this new business model. And, you know, we work on a lot of vacant business storefronts, et cetera. So we're also celebrating new businesses and that will help our economy too. Just downtown, we have Free People and Lululemon returning. So, you know, looking at all of that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Sonia. Hey, as we look at the time here, we did say this was going to go to eight o'clock. We have finished our official questions. There was about 19 minutes to go. We've been chatting offline behind the scenes, the four of us here. And we have chosen two questions. And we're going to do a little lightning round here. We're going to give you less than a minute. First one, I think we have time to do a minute and then we'll see how we do it. The second one, we might just do 30 seconds. So I'm going to let Kara do the first one here and start it off.
Yeah, and I just want to remind everyone that you can press that chat button and contribute your own question. We like to get to as many as we can. The first question comes from Jim Meckes. Many of our downtown workers currently live in South County affordable housing. Do you have a proposal to reduce the horrendous commutes these valued workers face getting to and from their Santa Cruz jobs? And we will start with Sonia Brunner.
Hi, I'm back. Long time no see. So this is a topic that has come up along with the rail trail. And that's a big topic that has opportunity to really impact that commute for people, South County to North County, and creating, you know, leaving the rail there to have opportunity for rail in the future. Not only would that help with the commute, but also be a great environmental and having the trail there alongside too for biking, roller skating, walking.
Thank you. Martine Watkins. A reminder, we have 30 seconds.
I think what I'll use my time for is to say essentially that was the intention of our downtown change is how do we get people closer to their places of work so that they can walk to work? They can access all the services they need without having to jump in the car. We have to continue to incentivize also alternatives to cars. And one of the things that we've seen over the past several months is that there's the opportunity to work remotely. And so as a county, as we holistically look at solutions to transportation, it definitely has to include walkable communities, people living in proximity to their needs of all types. And also looking at how are we building in a way that is mindful of that for our resilience to stressors and climate change? And we're approaching the fire season, so we have to be very mindful of building resilient design, passive housing, as well as other types of ways to have a stable infrastructure that's going to withstand time. So, thank you. I think I might have gone over my time. Sorry.
Thank you. Sandy Brown.
It's a great question, Jim. Thank you for asking. I think that this is kind of just a fundamental challenge. And I have to say, I am not confident that we are going to find any immediate way to address this big challenge. This is a long-term planning question. As a member of the Regional Transportation Commission representing the city, I have, you know, been vigorously supportive of getting that rail trail up and running. You know, but again, that is going to take a long time and major investment in order to get there. So in the meantime, I think that, you know, encouraging split shifts and other ways that people can break up the day commuting from home. Those are, you know, those are business decisions and they're not decisions that the local government can make. But I certainly think that we can try to find ways to incentivize those. And I also was really happy to support the EcoPass program, allowing downtown workers to have bus passes for those who can use them, that it makes sense for.
Thank you. Shebra Kalentari Johnson.
Thank you. This really is an equity and quality of life issues. Our fellow community members in South County are spending upwards of two hours in their cars away from their families, away from their work. And as has been said, it is a complex issue, sorry for the dinking, that has multiple layers. We have to look at alternative transportation. We have to look at housing, mixed-use housing that creates walkable communities. And we have to look at alternative transportations that are actually effective and can get people from point A to point B to point C. Okay, thank you.
Kayla Kumar.
Yeah, I think the rail and trail is a promising solution. I think building affordable housing that is near where people work is another kind of longer-term solution for the people that want to live in Santa Cruz and are happening to work. There is also the possibility that people prefer to live in South County and are working in Santa Cruz. So I also want to be mindful of the fact that just building housing, right, is not necessarily going to solve that for everybody. So, you know, things that I've heard from the business community that I think are, that are promising are alternative work hours, so staggering the workday late. And also remote, especially right now, forms of working and carpooling, incentivizing carpooling. I think right now that's not going to be possible. That would be a post-COVID-19 solution. And then, of course, the ability to have a bus pass or be able to provide that for their employees.
Kelsey Hill.
Thank you, Jim, for this question. It's a question that's really close to my heart. You know, emissions, I spent a lot of time thinking about how to lower carbon emissions. And I was really excited for the downtown metro bus pass program. And I'd like to see info about that program expanded so we can bump up the usage percentage of that program and also perhaps include people who work at jobs that are critical to Santa Cruz, but maybe exist outside that downtown space. You know, like the boardwalk, midtown, things like that. I'm supportive of also working with our downtown businesses to incentivize sustainable commute for their workers in ways that, some of those ways are already being employed by several organizations downtown. And I know Tiffany, with our Climate Action Plan, wants to incentivize remote intercommuting and I'd like to explore the ways that we can do that. I'm also supportive of the rail and trail concept, as has been mentioned. And I would love to see that pushed forward to bring down emissions and also bring that higher quality of life to people that are currently spending so much time in their cars.
Thank you. Elizabeth Conlin.
Yeah, I think that this is a very important issue. I would like to see more housing in Santa Cruz so that people can, you know, walk or bike or take other alternative transit means to work. I'm also excited about the rail trail as an eventual eventual form of public transportation and would be supportive of other investments in public transportation. And, you know, I think this is really important to sustainability. I know we care a lot about addressing climate change and the whole state is going to struggle to meet our climate goals unless we address the reducing our vehicle miles traveled. And if people are given the opportunity to live closer where they work, I think we'll be able to really tackle this. And I think unfortunately that the city relies on so many people commuting from South County and even from Monterey. I think this illustrates unfortunately why we still need to think about parking capacity downtown.
Thank you. Maria Cadenas.
I think you, I would echo what Shebra said. This is an equity issue. For years, the housing development has not happened in Santa Cruz and Watsonville has been building more affordable housing, which has led and compounded this issue in terms of transit. We need to look at housing development in Santa Cruz so that workers who work in Santa Cruz can live in Santa Cruz. Yes, they might choose not to, but the reality is that they don't really have a choice now. There's not enough housing that is affordable for the wages that we're paying for the work that we have. And I do think that we need to be very thoughtful about how we make sure that we're developing our housing fit here in Santa Cruz to make sure that the workers that work can live here. And we're not talking necessarily professional jobs that can be done remotely. A lot of these jobs are at the boardwalk, they are retail and service industries. So we need to be much more thoughtful and intentional on how we ensure that we're housing our workforce.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to Steve.
All right, just, we've got 10 minutes left. So what we're going to do, we're going to do one more question. This time, Robert will start immediately with the 30-second sign because you're only going to have 30 seconds. He'll type the question up there on the right after I repeat it as well. And then we'll immediately go into closing remarks where everybody gets one minute. So we might go about five minutes over, but let's go quick, please. So our second question from the audience, 30 seconds only, please, comes from Judy G. Thank you, Judy. Recent studies have shown that we do not have enough trained local workers in our construction trades, which means the city ends up hiring people from out of the area. How would we work to create apprenticeships and pre-apprenticeship programs so local workers could get good-paying jobs here? With Martine, please. Martine.
Thank you so much for that question. I actually have a meeting set up with our Water Department Director and our Superintendent of Schools to actually have that exact conversation. We need to start building our local workforce. We need to have careers and we need to have a career in college readiness and applied learning in education, but also off-ramps into jobs that they can have here locally. And I feel we, as a city, have more to do. We have an opportunity to grow, if you will, and to improve our relationships with education so that we're ensuring we're actually, we're generating our workers as opposed to needing to outsource them. And they live here, so they'll have an ability to be able to stay here and have good-paying jobs to be able to thrive here as well.
Thank you, Martine. Sandy Brown.
Yeah, I think this is absolutely critical. I actually have some experience through the Community Action Board. I worked to help develop a non-traditional employment program for women. And in that experience, I was able to connect with the building trades, with a lot of local partners, the Workforce Investment Board and others. And, you know, I think that this is absolutely something that we need to be looking at. And as Martine said, you know, our water department is really working on this. And I think there's some, you know, some great possibilities there. But I also think that we need to rely on the experience of our local building trades unions because they have established apprenticeship programs. And those can be, you know, and they're ready to accept trainees and they're ready to work with people. And so, you know, I think that that's a place that we need to build rather than kind of developing new ones.
Awesome. Thank you, Sandy. Cadenas, please have yourselves unmuted because when I call on you, I want you to go quick. We want to keep it tight here. Elizabeth Conlin.
Yeah, I think there are opportunities for the city to connect people with training opportunities, either, you know, as entry-level work or people who want to be retrained. And I would also just remark that it will be a struggle to have people develop those skills if we aren't building here. And so I do think it's important to generally support construction projects so that they exist.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Kelsey Hill, please.
Yeah, thanks. So I believe we can assist in developing the infrastructure to share knowledge across generations and across fields by leveraging union apprenticeships, peer-to-peer training programs that exist within industries, and utilizing our relationships with the higher education institutions around here. I also agree that affordable housing plays a role in this. If we are having students go to a world-class university and then can't afford to live here, we are losing people who could become productive members of our workforce.
Excellent. Sonia.
This makes me think of Germany, where my mom's from and I spent every summer and lived there. You go after high school to a skilled school that is either architecture or carpentry. And you only go to the university if you want to be a professor or do research. And so I think we have a lot to look at. I did learn about the union apprenticeships and there are other programs and working with Cabrillo College. There are a lot of skilled programs and organizations that I think we can utilize to really, especially now with people looking for new jobs and skills.
Thank you. Kayla.
Yeah, I agree with leaning on organized labor and the apprenticeship programs that already exist. There is a tool called the Community Workforce Agreement that I think, you know, construction could very well be a part of our recovery and especially of affordable housing. You know, so being able to have that kind of activity rooted in equity and local workforce and proper workplace conditions and training would be essential to me. I also want to say that the city does fund organizations like Food What, the organization I work for that does job training for young people. And when we're making budget decisions, the city will have a choice to continue funding those.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayla. Maria.
So I think what we need to do is there's a short term of leaning into the experience and the viable ways we have right now, training the workforce. But also, let's look at the Workforce Development Board, the investments that they're doing in terms of retraining. And this leverage, we have Cabrillo, but we also have Hardnell. They've done a great job of creating pathways on vocational trajectories and careers. So I think we can leverage Hardnell, Cabrillo, UCSC, and the Workforce Development Board to really look at people seeking a career, whether it's an academic for your school or whether it's a vocational school. We need to allow for tracks for them to be able to make it happen here locally.
Thank you, Maria. Let's wrap it up with Shebra.
Great. Career Technical Education, it's been said, but starting from middle school, high school, community college, our universities, I've worked on these grants before with success, connecting those programs with our nonprofits that serve youth. We have community organizations that connect with the juvenile justice programs and so bolstering what we have for career pathways with existing juvenile justice programs that are trying to get youth on the pathway to a thriving future for themselves.
Thank you. Kara, go.
Thank you. It is now time for closing remarks. Each candidate will have one minute. What would you like, what thought would you like to leave voters with? Sandy Brown.
Oh, I am on off-mute. Sorry. The idea was to make this quicker. So, you know, I just want to say in closing that, you know, I think that when we look at what it means to have a thriving economy. to have a thriving economy and a vital economy, that happens when we have community stability. And so I think it is fundamentally local government's job to do the things that are needed to make sure that our community is stable, that people feel, you know, that people feel safe, that people feel stable, and that they are not constantly worried about, you know, where they're going to get their next rent, you know, pay their next rent check from. So I think that, you know, that our focus needs to be on that broader question. And so, you know, I would just leave it there. You know, I think there's a lot of policy avenues, you know, that we can talk about. But for me, I just want to leave you with the idea that, you know, economic vitality happens when our community is stable. And so we need to focus there.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Martine Watkins.
Yeah, thank you so much for hosting us this evening. I feel I have a track record that supports that I know how to mobilize partnerships and really enact policies that reflect our shared values. And as we move forward as a community, we can uplift communities left behind, foster an economy with well-paying jobs. And we can do so by embracing sustainable green development, walkable communities that get people closer to their places of employment, while also increasing access, families' access to childcare. We can't have a thriving economy if our families don't have anywhere for their kids to go. It's imperative that we have really strong leadership in this moment because our community, our future generations, are really depending on our ability to work together in order to produce lasting solutions to make Santa Cruz the most healthy, equitable, and sustainable community possible. So thank you so much for having us this evening.
Thank you. Shebra Kalentari Johnson.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. You know, disasters really reveal the problems that already exist, and they force us out of complacency and open up opportunities to recreate. They have us ask the question, what kind of community do we want, and how do we get there? Our local businesses and economic development efforts are at the heart of this, and they can provide an opportunity for us to rebuild thoughtfully and effectively. Growing up in a small-business-owned family, being a small-business owner myself, having a master's in social work brings various perspectives together. It's shaped my approach in leading with a pragmatic mind and a compassionate heart. I'm running because I care deeply about the future of our community. I want to work with each of you to rebuild a resilient and inclusive Santa Cruz. I'm honored to have the support of community leaders and groups such as Locally Owned Business Alliance of Santa Cruz or LOVA, Vice Mayor Donna Myers, Kenny Supervisor Ryan Coonerty. I hope you'll join them and others in supporting me, and I would be honored to serve as your council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Kadenas.
Thank you for having us tonight. It's been a pleasure. I would like to say that on my day-to-day, what I focus about is creating local thriving economies. That is my focus. That's where my passion lies. And I were working with Brandon Napoli from SBDC, Carmen Nerrera from Pajaro CDC. I presented at the 82% Local Conference. This is not just about theory. This is about experienced life and how we connect as neighbors through our local economy to create a better Santa Cruz. We have achieved so much as a community. This recovery is really an opportunity for us to embrace the future that we want to get to. And I encourage you to visit my website, votemaria2020.org, where I have a conversation with Brandon from SBDC and Carmen, where I'm going to have a conversation with Sibley Simon around housing, and I'm having a conversation with Chris Benner about what a new solidarity economy really means. So thank you for your time. These forums are not enough time to get to know our points of view, and I encourage you to take the time to visit the website.
Thank you, Maria. Elizabeth Conlin.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to talk about these important issues and to hear from you, and thank you to the other candidates. You know, I just want to say that I think having an equitable recovery to the pandemic and the economic recession will be essential for whoever serves on city council in the next four years. We need to make sure that we are responding to the needs of businesses in the city, you know, offering what assistance we can, being nimble, finding those creative solutions in order to adapt to your needs as things change, to really pay attention to the city budget, you know, what sort of cuts we make, what sort of revenue we try and bring in. And then I think we need to have this long-term vision for what we want Santa Cruz to be after the pandemic. And that vision for me is an inclusive community with more housing and building a sustainable city where, you know, people can walk and bike to school and to work and to really live our values and be able to patronize all the wonderful local businesses. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Sonia Brunner.
With my decades of civic engagement and collaboration, I strongly believe the fullness of my life experiences, housing, and small business support, the community partnerships and endorsements like the Locally Owned Business Alliance, Mayor Cummings, Supervisor Coonerty, Council Member Matthews qualifies me as a candidate for Santa Cruz City Council. I will work to further understand and support the needs of businesses, employees, neighborhoods. One thing I've learned is there is no single solution, and every industry, every business is different. But I will continue to listen, support, and connect businesses with targeted resources and legislative efforts. My name is Sonia Brunner, and as an invested community member and mother, as a multicultural woman of color, I look forward to serving the success of Santa Cruz and would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Kayla Kumar.
Yes, thanks again, everyone, for being here. I'm wishing you all good health, my best to the other candidates as well. For me, I think it's really important to share with folks, as someone who is, this is my first time running for office, to be really clear that I understand there is much work to be done. This is going to be a full-time job. We need folks who are completely committed to doing the hard work ahead. I've made those adjustments in my life, so I can dedicate myself in that way. And while I have experience and I have, you know, the master's degree in economics, what I believe this moment calls from in leadership is humility, is coming to the people and asking the questions and listening and engaging the complexity of not only these issues, but our community. Our community is complicated. The problems ahead are complicated. And we need folks who are not scared off by that, who do not wish to cut corners around that, but understand that harnessing the complexity of our community is actually the way forward. So that's, you know, I'd love to, I wish I got to talk more about my policies. You can find them on my website, but that's really what I think is super important here to leave you with.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayla. And Kelsey Hill.
Thanks so much. I love the lightning round, and I appreciate being here. So my campaign is grounded in four pillars that have proven to be critical to the different neighbors and business owners that I've talked to. And all of them create a community that is fertile ground for a thriving economy even in a post-COVID world. So one is a recovery from COVID-19 that keeps our small businesses afloat, cares for struggling community members, and charts out a course that builds deep resilience in our economy for future emergencies. Two is building affordable housing by negotiating with developers to get projects to shovel-ready level to maximize the amount of affordability to effectively combat the housing crisis. Three, I want to create and empower systems of safety that better meet the needs of community members experiencing crisis and create a sense of care and safety in our public spaces. And four, moving forward with bold climate policy that converges our values of sustainability and resilience in our built environment and our land use policy. This means putting priority behind our climate action goals and creating a community-friendly to alternative modes of high-carbon transportation. I'll leave it there, but thanks so much for having me, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. I've been so honored to co-host this with Steve Bennett. Does anyone else have, I'd like to add, if we, Santa Cruz Local is hosting similar candidate forums the week of October 5. You can visit our website up here to find out more. Thank you all for attending. Any last words, team?
Casey.
Robert, thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to put a clap, hands up in the chat box for all of our candidates, Kayla, Kelsey, Elizabeth, Shebra, Maria, Sandy, Martine, and Sonia. Thank you for joining us tonight and listening to our concerns from the business community. It's important that you hear from the businesses that create the value of economic vitality for Santa Cruz County. And I want to do a special shout-out to Kara and Steve for hosting this and doing our moderating. They were wonderful participants. And I want you to walk away from this event knowing that your business community is there for Santa Cruz County, and we wish you the very, very best of luck on your campaign. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Take care, okay?
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Bye.